There it is. I just saw it pop up meeting in recording.
Yeah.
So yeah, so this will be available even if we, I'm just not seeing a, a big turnout from the public here yet, but it will be available via the usual social media town pages come tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll upload it first thing tomorrow morning and then send the link out. So Jen and Patrick want to watch it again, but it'll go out to everyone. So people can take a look. The public will be encouraged to submit their comments, feedback, recommendations. So we'll put that also along with the upload on YouTube.
And there is a public meet and greet on, was it Friday at four, I believe?
Friday at four, from four to five thirty at the community center.
Okay.
Cool. Looking forward to that.
Yeah, I'll be, it'll be nice to, nice to meet you, Patrick, in person instead of
Yeah.
the virtual world.
I'll be there.
At this point, I feel like, feel like half the people I know and half the people I interact with aren't real people. They're just, you know,
It is virtual.
One by two inch squares on a screen.
So Miranda, so Miranda, the, um, the hybrid system, we're planning to have that in place mid February?
That's the goals that will be.
We have all the trustees here with.
Yes, Julian, maybe February is the goal. Mary Larson, your internet's not super happy. You may want to turn your video off. I'll do it for you. Let him try it again.
Wow.
Mary Larson, are you there?
It says I turned it on.
Oh, well, I also turned it off for you, but you're, I would stay off. Sorry.
Yep. Okay. I'm standing right next to the routers.
Okay. Can definitely hear you better with your video off.
Okay. So you at least can hear me again. Well, uh, I'll make this quick then. Patrick, Jennifer, thanks for joining us this evening. You know, uh, give you guys a couple of minutes here each to introduce yourselves, tell us something about yourselves and then Miranda will be peppering you with questions. So.
Oh.
Yeah. And the plan will be, we'll ask you both the same question. One of you will respond first, the other one will go second. Whoever went second will then go first on the following question.
It's like Jeopardy.
It is like Jeopardy. It's generally fun, as fun as we can. So I think Mary Larson, I thought we would start with Patrick. I think Patrick, we'd just love for you to share a little about yourself and your credentials.
Well, my name is Pat Fitzgibbons. First of all, thank you everybody for, for being here. I'm excited to be here. I appreciate everybody taking the time. I know everybody's busy. But my name is Pat Fitzgibbons. I'm a candidate for town marshal with Netherland. I spent about 23 years in law enforcement between two agencies. My first agency was Lamar, Colorado. If anybody knows where Lamar is southeastern Colorado. It was the first job I took, spent about 10 years there. Had a little bit of time in the private sector, left Lamar, realized I loved law enforcement, got back into it. And spent the remainder of my career, about 13 years in Lewisville. I retired as an operations commander. Um, and every department's a little different, but I was in charge of all the patrol officers and, and things like that. I'm a former army veteran. Spent a couple of years jumping out of perfectly good airplanes. Um, and I had a good time doing that. Um, I have two adult children. Both in their twenties and in May, I'm going to be a grandfather. So I'm pretty, pretty happy about that. Um, so thank you. Um, I teach. Do some teaching. I've been teaching at CU Denver for about six years, five, six years now. I also teach at CCD Community College of Denver, part-time, both part-time. Uh, I also do some academy training, uh, use of force stuff, things like that for Red Rocks. Uh, when they need me, uh, and on the side, I have a, I have a podcast that I work on that, uh, I've worked on for about six years. So again, welcome everybody. I appreciate your time and I'm happy to be here.
Thanks, Patrick.
Yeah.
Jennifer Fine Levin, please tell us a little about yourself.
Well, hello, I'm Jen Fine Levin. I've been with Ned for a couple of years. So, um, I've think everybody here probably knows me, but not, maybe not my history. So I've been in law enforcement a little over 20 years and the majority of that time was with a mid-size agency with Boulder County Sheriff's Office. Kind of realized my jam was the smaller sized departments because with Boulder County, I was stationed in, um, basically I was, uh, Lyons for a year. I was in Niwot for a year and I was also in the town of Superior. So, um, coming through Boulder County, at the time that I left there, I was a lieutenant in the reserve unit. I had, after full-time, I went to reserve status to be a stay-at-home mom so I could build and flex my schedule out to be home with my daughter. And, um, as part of the, being a lieutenant in the reserve unit, I was in charge of training and, um, coordinating training and, um, tracking hours and uh, assisting with hiring and oral boards and stuff like that. I also did background investigations. And then when I, uh, was ready to come back full-time though, I decided not to try to get back on full-time with Boulder County. Because I really wanted to be in a smaller community because I had learned, like I said, with Boulder County, that's where I wanted to be. And I had a shooting coach and mentor who was working in Plattville. Who also contracted out for the town of Gilcrest out of Weld County. And, um, they asked me to come join their department and that's where I went when I got back in full-time. When my daughter was a little bit older and I was there for three years and I left that department. I, I was a detective supervisor there. Learned a ton. It was incredible to kind of compare Weld County versus Boulder County. Just, it was, it was like a different job. I, I could not, the, the best thing I learned from that experience was that Boulder is a little bit of a bubble, right? And so I think that's kind of helped me understand what's going on now with current events and how everybody uses law enforcement. But, um, then when I was, uh, decided to, um, leave Plattville and I was actually gonna, gonna go honestly, try to find where the money was because I was getting older and I was looking more at retirement. But I got recruited to help start MEAD PD. Um, Weld County had been contracting out for MEAD and they decided they didn't want to contract out for the smaller towns. And so that was an incredible opportunity and I jumped on it and I was with, uh, MEAD for two years. I was, uh, an FTO for MEAD. I also got an opportunity to be a school resource officer in MEAD. Um, and, uh, just amazing opportunity. In, in that two years, we had four chiefs, a lot of trials and tribulations. At one point there was two officers left. Everybody either quit or got fired. And we were working 24/7. I had a 30-minute call, uh, response time. I was literally sleeping in my uniform. And then when the last guy quit and it was just me, I decided that, um, maybe I might want to find something that was a little more stable for what I was looking for at this point in my career and um, Chief Johns had, uh, reached out to me previously about Ned and that's how I, long story short, ended up in Ned. And, uh, it's been an amazing opportunity. And, uh, other than that, outside of work, I also, I have one, uh, daughter, she's 19. I mentioned that earlier. She's in college. I have, um, a second job. I have an explosives detection dog. Um, I have some, uh, I'm a some leadership roles there in terms of, uh, being a site lead there. Um, and I do some volunteer work. In the past I've done, I had an English mastiff that was a therapy dog. We would go to the library for the literacy program. And, uh, now I do something called Be My Eyes, which is I help blind people who, through video conferencing that are needing help with things either out and about or around the house.
Great. Thanks, Jen. So Jen, we'll start with you then for this first question. Why did you decide to start a career in law enforcement?
Well, I, sorry, Miranda, you heard this the other day, I think, at the library, but you know, um, I had always wanted to either be, um, originally a veterinarian or a police officer. And people talk about callings and I don't know if it's a calling or not. I think it, I just was sort of a weird kid and I, I just, that's what I wanted to do. Um, and I, I morphed those two things and thought, oh, perfect thing. I'm going to be an animal control officer. So I started as a reserve animal control officer, but while I was doing that, I also, well, sorry, a little bit before that, I mentioned I had, uh, my stereo was stolen while I was in college and a female officer came to take that report. And I had, was so struck by that. It was the first time I'd actually ever been exposed to a female law enforcement officer. And all of a sudden it became something that I could do. I just didn't, wasn't in my frame of reference. And so um, that actually is when I got the idea to combine my two loves and do, uh, become an animal control officer. And, um, anyway, I did that and I realized once I got into the field that really where my passion was, was the law enforcement side. So I put myself through academy and, um, was hired by Boulder County.
Thanks, Jen. Patrick, same question. Why did you decide to start a career in law enforcement?
That's a great question. Um, I have a lot of family members that are in law enforcement, used to be in law enforcement. They've since retired. A lot of Chicago police officers, other police officers in the state of Illinois. Uh, I was in the military, like I mentioned in my intro, and for me, it was kind of like a natural progression. I served my country. Um, I wanted to continue to serve, uh, in a law enforcement capacity. So I did that. Got out of the military, uh, put myself through the academy. I had the GI Bill, which helped. But, uh, worked a couple of jobs during that time, put myself through the academy, had a young family at the time. But I was really passionate about continuing my service, uh, with, uh, the community, whatever community I landed at, and that happened to be Lamar. And, uh, yeah, I, it's just always been in my blood to, to serve, uh, first in the military, then in law enforcement. But I think I got pushed from family too, because like I said, I got a lot of family in law enforcement. So.
Okay, thanks. So Patrick, why do you want to be the police chief? And what are you looking for from this position?
Well, why, I think I'm, I want to be the police chief because I could bring, um, uh, my skills and talents and education to the role. Uh, what I'm looking for, uh, is to learn about the community more, to get to know the community, get to know the officers. I think that's obviously very important. And I know there's a lot of work to be done in Netherland and I'm prepared to do the job. I got the experience, the qualifications and education to be successful at it.
Great. Jen, I'm happy to repeat the question if you'd like, but turning it over to you.
Okay. Um, you know, you, one of, one of the reasons I really want to be the police chief in Ned is because Ned wants us, right? I mean, Ned wants us, the board of trustees wants us, the, uh, Miranda, you want us, even the town manager before you fought for us. And I think that's, that's like a huge part of the battle, right? To have that unwavering support and know that we'll be able to work in collaboration and partnership and that the community really wants us, like we, it makes a difference to them. Anytime these rumors start floating around about Boulder County taking over, everybody's like, no, no, we don't want that. And so I think, um, knowing that you're starting out with this tremendous support is one reason why I would love to be in that chief's position. The, the other thing is I think Ned is in this prime position right now, right? We have um, so much change happening and it's a really exciting time. It's a really scary time. But we have, you know, Chief Johns has given us this tremendous foundation and the work he's done for the community support and outreach and building those relationships is, I mean, it sets anybody up for success. And if we can, if we can, you know, what I envision is building off of that and then, uh, incorporating some of that innovation and, um, best practices and maybe even some more of that administrative stuff to, to bring a, um, well, you know, I mean, um, I don't, I, I don't know. I mean, I, if we can kind of combine all of that, I just think we are prime for like this unbelievable opportunity to really dial this in. I think it's incredible. I don't, you know, and I love Ned. I mean, I love the community. Obviously, um, and I think everybody in Ned is willing to think outside the box. And I think this police department requires a town, obviously in a, a BOT that's willing to be creative because we're not going to be able to start throwing money at a bunch of problems. I can tell you that right now, right? We have to find other ways. So
Yeah.
That's, that's why I want to do it.
Great. Thank you. Jen, what are some skills that you use when engaging in police work?
Uh, well, obviously I have the gift of gab. So, uh, I think, um, you know, communication empathy is huge for me and listening. But I think, um, when, you, you know, if we talk about inclusion and really walking that walk, not just talking that talk. And I think have, you know, having consistency is also really important. And I think it's just a combination of all of those things. I mean, I think I use my, um, I use my follow-through and my communication the most and I, and just being consistent and dependable. And if I don't, if I can't get something done for somebody, I can at least give them a resource of some other way maybe to get it done.
Thanks, Patrick. Let me know if I need to repeat any of the
Yeah, could you repeat the question?
What are some skills that you use when engaging in police work?
Um, I think like Jen said, I mean, communication is the key to not only police work, but anything. Good, clear communication, effective communication. I also engage in problem-solving analysis, problem-solving skills. Like I think uh, the police department, any police departments in the business of solving problems, or at least attempting to solve problems. Uh, so problem analysis skills, uh, bringing that to the table, analytical skills. So it's a combination. It's a collaboration of all those when doing my job in the past and how I would perform the job uh, as the police chief. But I think communication is, is, is the big thing. If you don't have good, effective, both verbal and written communication, then you're not going to be very effective in any role you have, least of all the chief of police.
Okay, thank you. Patrick, can you describe one of the most challenging situations you've encountered in your career?
Oh geez. You got a pen? I can, I can write them down. Um, I, I think one of the most challenging situations for me is when I was a detective in Lamar. And, uh, I got called to the street. We were low, um, on staff. So I was asked to be the watch commander. And the first call, call out of the, the gate, you know, that I got was a, a call of a, uh, a, a school-aged child that was crossing the street and almost got hit by a bus. And so when I got to the scene, it turned out the bus ran over the, the kid and killed the kid. Uh, so that was challenging for me, uh, as it was a fairly new officer. I've only been an officer for like six or seven years. And I've dealt with, um, not that exact situation, but, uh, it was challenging because, you know, the first officer on scene has a lot of responsibilities. You know, we're, we're trying to uh, figure out what's going on, obviously, trying to, uh, contain the scene, things like that. So it was, it was very challenging for me. Uh, not only scene protection and managing the scene, uh, until all their officers got there, but emotionally and mentally, it was challenging for me. So it was a very difficult situation and there had been many, many more. Um, like, you know, after the fact, because I spent a long career in law enforcement, but that always sticks out in my mind as one of the most challenging uh, situations that I dealt with in law enforcement, certainly not the only one, but the one that sticks out most in, in my mind.
Thank you. Jen?
So when I think about challenging for me in law enforcement, I think about situations that, um, I reflect back upon and really wish I could have done a lot better. And I think the, the most, one of the most challenging things that I've come across is that, uh, huge house explosion actually in Ned. Um, I mean, it was so complicated and we were dealing with so many different agencies, you know, CBI, FBI, Ned PD, uh, ATF, the Rangers, we didn't have the staffing. We were dealing also with the district attorney's office and everybody had a different uh, need, right? And everybody had a different reason for being there and everybody had a different priority. And we were all pretty exhausted and everybody in the town wanted information and every, you know, it was, it was, that was really challenging for me, uh, for sure. I learned a lot from it though.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Jen, um, I'm going to read this. I don't mess up. Uh, but what do you believe is the role of the police department? And of peace officers and working with other non-policing human services agencies, both governmental and non-governmental?
So I think of the role of the police department and police officers as, as a guardian. A lot of times you'll hear police officers talking about themselves as warriors and that, and there are, there is a time and a place for that, right? But I think generally the majority of what we do is being guardians and we have to collaborate and work with all of those other entities. We talk about the corresponders and how valuable they are. They make our job easier. I mean, we need to, it's no longer the day of a police officer shows up unseen and, you know, five minutes later, everything's figured out, taken care of, and you're gone. I mean, we have situations where we don't have the resources, right? We have people with mental illness. We have people with addiction and we don't have places to bring them or that can help them that are, you know, very readily available. So it, I, I think our role is a lot. I think we are, um, we are peacekeepers, but we're also therapists, we're mediators, we're babysitters, some, literally sometimes. We're moderators and we are counselors. I mean, sometimes we're taxi services. I mean, JP gave somebody a ride home the other day because she had her groceries and was walking in the snow and needed a ride. And you know, sometimes we're tow truck drivers and pulling people out. We, we wear a lot of hats.
Thank you. Patrick?
I'll go with Jen's answer. No, I'm just no, I mean, you know, piggyback a little bit. I mean, yeah, I mean, you know, the, the role of the police department is, is to serve and protect, to serve and protect the community. And like Jen indicated, I mean, police officers, you know, when I first started 23 years ago, I mean, it was, it was pretty, I don't think it's ever been really cut and dry, but it, it was more defined the role, but now um, we've expanded, like Jen indicated, we, we wear many different hats. Uh, I believe in working with, we can't do it alone. I think for, you know, the problem I think sometimes with law enforcement agencies is they, they think they're an island or they can do everything by themselves. They can't. We need outside, uh, outside, uh, help, especially a town like Netherland where there's, there's not many officers. So we're going to rely a lot more on outside resources and outside help. But that's what law enforcement does, you know, to have that, uh, you know, good working relationships and have mutual aid agreements with like BCSO and other agencies. Um, but I also am a firm believer in like coresponders. You mentioned it. Um, Miranda, about, you know, working with, with mental health, uh, professionals to, to kind of co-respond with law enforcement. I'm a huge proponent of that. Some officers don't like that. I love it because we're not the experts in mental health, you know, but to have that resource available, you know, for Netherland, that's huge. So again, I believe, you know, the role of a police department is to serve and protect, wear many different hats, engage in that community policing, which the town of Netherland expects from their police officers and police department and police chief. Which is very important, but I also believe in working closely and having good working relationships with government and non-governmental entities.
Thank you. Uh, Patrick, do you have any strategies for meeting deadlines for paperwork and just staying on top of that administrative stuff?
Yeah, I, I learned the hard way with that, Miranda, with, uh, being a new commander. Yeah, it's prioritizing, you know, you, you prioritizing things or tasks that need to be handled at once. Uh, there's software out there that I use, uh, or used when I was a, when I was still on the job to help me prioritize. Again, I started out with just jotting stuff down. It doesn't work. You know, at least it didn't work for me. But yeah, prioritizing things, things that, you know, can be put on the back burner temporarily. Priorities need to be handled first. And again, I have a system in place through the help of technology a lot that, uh, helps me prioritize those things because I know as a police chief and I work closely with the chief in in Lewisville, I mean, you got a million things going on at once. You got that 30,000-foot view. And you need to be able to prioritize tasks and, and, and stick with that in order to be effective.
I think Jen?
Yeah, I, I agree with everything that Patrick said too. I think also a large component of that is being able to delegate when you can.
Exactly.
I think it's really important that, you know, this is a working chief position and it's really easy to get distracted. And sometimes, uh, you, people won't understand, but if you're the only one on duty and you have, you're up against this deadline and then you get called to domestic violence call. Well, it's going to be a long night, right? And so, um, I think part of my strategy for sure is definitely not leaving things to the last minute because you just don't get those last minutes very often in Ned. And, uh, I have, what I do is I have a huge white, um, erase board in my office. And then I have also these giant, um, sticky notes, like huge wall size. And I have to do it that way. And then I know I'm, by prioritizing, um, I could just take a quick look. But I think I would just, those are the only couple of things I would add for me personally.
And thanks, Jen.
May I make a comment?
Of course.
I, I would just like to note for the people who are watching this, who aren't familiar with these two people perhaps, and who have not been familiar with the situation, that if they seem to be answering the questions in somewhat similar ways, there's a reason for that. It's because in the interview process, we've selected people that we believe are appropriate to Netherland. And so all I would bring in is if it, this shouldn't look weird. These are both people that we think would be ideal for Netherland. And we are making a very, very tough choice between two people who do have similar values, who do have similar approaches, approaches and values that we believe are consistent with this town. So I would encourage our candidates, uh, while nothing has gone wrong at all. I would encourage our candidates to kind of think carefully about what is it that distinguishes you from, uh, the other applicant? Uh, you're, you're, you're both, uh, excellent and qualified. Uh, so, uh, for the people listening and for the people who will be looking at the recording, I would simply suggest, uh, uh, to try to emphasize the differences where you can. Um, in order to help, uh, the observers distinguish between you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, trustee Taylor. Maybe this question will do it. Uh, Jen, will you please describe your management style?
Yeah, I think my leadership style, I have sort of a combination of like, uh, probably servant and, um, transformational. Uh, I really believe in motivating and I, and having everybody understand the why, right? I think it's important for everybody to know what we're striving for. And I love, I really love mentoring the people that I'm working with. And I do, I also really believe, you know, law enforcement, obviously there is a pyramid approach to law enforcement, but I, I really value the bottom-down, top-up method as well, right? Because this is a working chief position, right? And I am alongside everybody, everybody, the chief Johns is working with us out on patrol. And I think that there's something really valuable to that. And, um, you know, so uh, I think that, um, the, that would probably be how I would summarize my leadership style.
Thanks. Patrick?
I think my leadership style is, you know, my goal in leadership has always been through my whole career in law enforcement is, especially in leadership roles, was to train and mentor and coach the people that are going to replace me someday. Through motivation coaching like Jen said, but I believe a lot in collaboration. As Jen said, this is a working position and I'm excited about that. I'm excited to get back on the street. Because that's where you can really connect, not only with the officers, but the community. So I believe in collaboration. Look, I'm not the smart, I don't want to be the smartest guy in the room. I want to be surrounded by people who bring different perspectives and different opinions to the table because I think better collaboration you have on a scene or whatever. And in my experience, most of the time you have time on your side. Uh, but I can switch into that autocratic role very quickly where there needs to be decisions made quickly and I can make them. But I, again, I balance between the, the, uh, democratic or collaborative leadership style, especially in a town like Ned where you don't have many officers. You have to be that way, at least I think. But I could also switch back into that autocratic role. We need to do this, 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 and this. So that's my balance of leadership style.
Thank you. So I think we're just hoping to kind of dig in a little bit about the team. What do you feel like are key components to building a good, strong, solid team?
Uh, is that for me, Miranda? Uh, is that for me, Miranda?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, for you, Patrick. Thank you.
Uh, the key components of, of building any team is first of all, trust, I believe. I mean, you have to establish that trust with the team. And that's where as a police chief, you know, I would come in and I would have to get to know the officers, their needs, wants, all those things. And again, it's much easier in a, in a, in a town like Netherlands because you have a small department. But first and foremost, you have to establish trust within the team. Realizing that I'm not going to be perfect, but you have to establish that trust first. Because if you don't have trust, I don't think you have, you, you really, what do you have to work on? You don't really have, you, you don't really have much to build on if you don't have that trust. Again, it's not about being right all the time. It's not about, you know, you know, living in this bubble where we're all happy all the time. No, I mean, that's not realistic. But to build that trust, to build that good work ethic amongst each other, to build, uh, you know, to, she can produce a good work product, obviously communication, all those things are, are very and very important to, to build an effective team. But again, I, in my opinion, I think it starts first and foremost with a team is trust. You have to be able to trust each other, uh, and then everything else I believe can be built off that.
Thank you. Jen?
I think transparency is huge to build a team. I think especially in the law enforcement community. So transparency and, uh, being adaptive as well. And I think inclusion, uh, you know, incorporating, um, diversity and making sure that if I have questions, I'm going to ask about why something's being done, right? Or if my team is questioning, why is this being done and I don't know, I'm going to ask those questions up the chain. And then I'm going to make sure that I have a good understanding and I'm going to bring that information back down the chain and make sure that everybody has that understanding. And I think that that is, uh, you know, part of also that trust and transparency. But I, I think also it's, I just lost everybody. Everybody's gone. Here they come back. Um, it's also, you know, providing, uh, ongoing growth and learning too. I mean, uh, law enforcement is constantly changing and evolving and we, and we need to keep up with that. And if my team, you know, that, so at the helm of any department, your team needs to know that you're going to be current and you're going to keep them current, you're going to give them a chance to grow because you trust them. And so I, I think those are, uh, several things that I would do for team, you know, to keep my team cohesive and, um, happy. And the other thing is, you know, uh, in Ned, again, we're small, we work alone a lot of times. They really just want someone to talk to. I mean, I have seen officers follow Chief Johns around the department, pretty much almost walking with him just to get a few minutes. And so I think having, um, time set aside on a regular basis where they can just come in and chat. And so it's, it's not always about business is important. And finding ways to do the team belt building also within, within the members of the department. Find ways to do that, even though we may not be overlapping, right? And that might mean, you know, the chief's hours are straddling both sides of the week or the chief's coming in and staying till 10:00 PM one night. I think those are some of the things that I have thought about, knowing how Ned works.
So you both spoke to the importance of coaching and mentoring. Can you give a specific example of a time in which you helped someone improve their knowledge or skills? And Jen, that goes to you.
Oh, me first?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, yeah. Um, so, um, yeah, you know, it, it's pretty basic, really. I mean, uh, we had an officer who felt uncomfortable doing an interviewing a small, like a young child. And so, um, I, you know, I, when I had, that officer had mentioned that to me. So one of the next time that I had a case like that, I asked if they wanted to come along and just sort of watch and listen and see how I did it first. And, uh, so we did that and then afterward we talked about it, you know? Like, here's why I asked this type of question. We talked about open ended questions. And I, and I went through the whole process with them. Um, so he was sort of, he was learning without feeling like him making mistakes was going to affect the quality of care for that victim and/or the suspect, right? And it, it was just a way for him to improve and learn in real time.
You, Patrick?
I, I remember when we promoted, um, a couple of corporals to sergeant and one sergeant in particular, this is when I was with Lewisville, uh, and I was a commander. Uh, he came into my office one day after he was newly promoted and was really, um, kind of afraid. I had some trepidation about being in charge of street personnel. Um, I mean, he knew what he was getting into, but, you know, to now be in that situation where you have the stripes and now you're in charge of shift was kind of daunting to him. And so we had a long talk, you know, about my expectations of him. And those weren't, yeah, I mean, of course he had to do his job and, and watch out for his officers. But I, I stress the importance to him is it, it's okay to make mistakes. You know, you're human, you, you can make mistakes. I mean, that's how we learned because he kept telling me, I just don't want to make a mistake. And I said, well, that's unrealistic because it's not possible. You are going to make mistakes. And don't, don't get bogged down with the thought of making mistakes. Just do the best job you can. And we had a couple of different meetings and I believe I gave him the confidence. Uh, in fact, I know I did because he started having a different attitude about that. He was less fearful and he was gaining the confidence. Uh, and I could have easily said, you know, talk to other sergeants, but I didn't. Because I was a fairly new commander too. And so it's my role to, to coach and mentor those street supervisors. And so that was, uh, a moment where, um, you know, I had a chance to, to help him out. And he's still there today and he's still very successful, uh, and I was proud of that.
Thank you. Patrick, can you talk about your experience with recruiting police officers? And specifically, what strategies would you bring to Netherlands to get officers here?
I could, I couldn't hear that. You were a little muffled, Miranda.
Can you tell us about your experience recruiting police officers? And what strategies you would use to get officers here to Netherlands?
I think, you know, one of the strategies that I've used in the past was go into, I mean, I'm connected in the college, the community colleges of Colorado. So I would use that strategy. I know a lot of people within the community college system in, in Colorado. So tap into that resource. Uh, police departments are always on college camps or they used to be, um, on college campuses. So career days, um, things like that, I think is a good opportunity for Ned to get out there with some materials, some brochures, things like that to kind of, uh, get recruitment, uh, to get people interested in the town of Netherlands. Uh, I think using social media and using, uh, technology is another good way to recruit, uh, you know, good candidates for, for Netherlands. Uh, and a lot of it is just word of mouth, Miranda. I mean, a lot of it is just using the network. I have a pretty big network, so it's a matter of, of utilizing my network and just word of mouth, I think, is sometimes the best. And say, look, we got some great positions here in the town of Netherlands. It's a great opportunity to work for a great community. Um, and so I would utilize my resources as well, as, you know, not just law enforcement resources, but other resources too, to, to aid in the recruitment effort, uh, with, uh, Netherlands.
Perfect. Thank you. Jen?
Well, I think the key to recruiting in Netherlands, and that's something that, uh, Miranda, you've improved that process a lot recently with speeding up the process. I think the key to recruiting is getting people and when people are interested, hooking people as quickly as we can. I think that is one thing that makes a big difference is really competitive right now, really, really competitive. And Ned is not, um, as competitive with their starting pay. So there's other ways that we can come in and get people excited to come to Ned. So a couple of ideas that I've had, you know, um, police officers love having assigned cars, having a take home car. I guarantee if you ask them, um, would you rather have a slightly higher pay or would you rather a take home car? They're going to probably say take home car. And so, um, we, you know, we do have a great partnership with Boulder County and they have, uh, they have cars parked in Superior, in Lyons, in Boulder, in Niwot. Uh, we could actually maybe see about, depending on where officers are coming from, have a car where they would drive their personal car and they could, um, come pick a Ned car up there and commute to Ned. I mean, that, things like that. Also, when we can get our staffing up, they have lots of collateral things they can do. We have to get really excited about these things that they can do. Joining, um, the Boulder County's joint SWAT team, they can become a hostage negotiator. Things that we can compete with those other midsize, larger size agencies. We can also, you know, one of the things that I've done since I've been in Ned is we did get approved to pay for somebody to sponsor them through Academy. And that didn't work out with that applicant, but that was a huge, um, like a huge milestone for Ned, I think, really progressive. And so let's say, you know, the other, if you find someone who's already in Academy, like Patrick's saying, go recruit at the academies. If it's depending, we, you know, maybe we're not doing a hiring bonus, but maybe if we hire them and they want to stay, you know, they get past just like year or, or through FTO, they get a bonus which will be reimbursing them for the first half of their academy. Maybe they stay for two years and they get that second half of their academy. And now they've had their academy paid for. So I think we, you know, things like that. Let, Ned doesn't have all this money at their disposal, but we do have a budget we can pull from, you know, a little bit this year and a little bit that year if we need to. But otherwise, and I don't want to ramble on, I mean, get excited about Ned. Holy moly, like, you can go on a hike, you can go on foot patrol, like the business owners want to see you. It's, it's like, I, you know, it's not a, it's not about the money. And right now, we don't even work graveyard. You don't have to work past 10:00 PM. And it's like, why wouldn't you want to come work in that, right? And that's what they have to know. You just have to get out there and talk about it, really.
Yeah, like, like Jen said, there's so many different things you can do, Miranda. Just get creative.
Goal is to be fully staffed here, you two. You both know that. We're working on it.
Yeah.
Jen, what would you say is your biggest area of improvement?
Uh, for me, for sure, well, I've already said that I need to get better at, um, reading and understanding budgets. And then, uh, actually learning how to use Excel. Like, I'd really love to be able to do that, period. But that's sort of the easy stuff. The other area where I have to improve upon is sometimes I tend to focus on what isn't happening instead of what is happening. Uh, in my, and so I've been, so, so that, that's something that I continue to work on, right? Like, you know, we're planning all this frozen dead guy day stuff. And instead of looking at all like, whoa, look at all the progress we've made. We have this great parking plan now this year. We have this, I'm, you know, I'm like, but we don't have this and we don't have this. And so that's definitely an area that I need to improve upon.
Thanks.
That was so many. I would say, you know, for me, it's the work-life, uh, work, um, home life balance. You know, when I, when I work, I, I, you know, I work long hours. Uh, I put the time in and sometimes I have to disconnect. So I, I've gotten better with that over the years. But, and I have many other things I need to work on, like Jen said, and technology and spreadsheets and stuff like that. But for me, it's the, you know, it's the work, home, life balance. Um, you know, for me, I, I don't have any kids at home anymore, so I'll go all in with the work. But I just need to learn how to, to do a better job at, uh, disconnecting from work sometimes. And I understand, you know, the chief of police job, you're, I mean, any cop is technically always on duty. But the chief of police job, uh, is a job that you have, it's 24/7. I mean, you're on call and people are going to be calling you and I'm prepared for that. But I have to learn how to take time for me too sometimes. So that's my biggest, uh, area that I need to work on.
I know you have to, you just both discussed this a little bit throughout your, your responses, but when thinking about what attributes make an excellent chief, what comes to mind?
Can you, can you say that again, Miranda?
Yeah, what attributes of a, of a chief do you want to embody if given this role? What are those like key attributes that you just think are so important that are specific to you?
Uh, I, I would say, you know, again, trust, transparency, good communication, effective communication, uh, being empathetic. Uh, being humble, I think is, is, is a big one for me. Uh, humility goes a long way with me. I mean, it's okay to say that you're wrong. I think so many law enforcement officers get, at least in my opinion, get hung up on this, well, I can't be wrong. And I've worked for supervisors like that. Well, they'll never admit they're wrong. Because a lot of them think it's a sign of weakness. I think it's a sign of strength when somebody, a leader can say, look, I made a mistake, I'm wrong. I don't know the answer, but I'm going to figure it out and I'll get back to you. So humility is big for me. Uh, but again, trust, transparency, good communication, empathy, honesty, integrity. All those are good or what I, I hold dear and are, are attributes with supervisors I've worked for and that I've adopted over the years. And I think every police chief should have those attributes and probably a couple more.
Thank you.
Me?
Yep. Sorry.
Um, so I think obviously accountability, and I'm not going to repeat everything that Patrick said because, um, uh, uh, you know, because Trustee Taylor told me not to. No, I'm just kidding. Uh, but you know, I, I mean, for me, a, a good police chief is somebody who you know is going to get the job done and who's always going to be there for you and who knows how to get the job done and who knows how to stay current and can go and find the resources they need, who can, you know, you know, go to, um, look at, look, you know, go to perf if you need to, go to post if you need to, go, be on committees when you need to, to stay current, like who has your back. And having your back isn't always being like the buddy or affable or whatever. Sometimes it means I trust you to make sure our policy is good. And because what officers really need to know is generally have some guidelines and policies so that no matter where they are or what they're doing, they have a baseline that's expected of them so that the rest they can figure out on their own. And so I think they, that being a, a, a good chief is, is being there and being willing to do everything that I'm asking them to do. So not just leading by example, but, you know, doing it and understanding why I'm asking them to do it and being really clear about that. And being open to communication and willing to change and willing to grow and, um, not feeling threatened. I mean, not, like, the other thing that's huge and, and I'll just stop with this is the biggest issue for me with any leader is feeling like you have some sort of power if you are the funnel of information. I do not need to be a funnel of information. I want to share information openly with everybody and, and that's great. And so I think that's, that's a really, really big one for me. You know, there's for sure.
Listen, Jen, what do you think will be the biggest challenge for you in this role?
Uh, well, I mean, I think there's operational challenges, which we've, you know, we've hinted upon. Uh, uh, staffing is, is a big challenge. Um, so, you know, when you're short staffed and you're taking on a leadership role and you're, and you're implementing policy, which is going to be amazing, it's, it is hard to get to do that with divided attention. And you absolutely are as a working chief. So I think that's going to be a, a large component of it. Kind of settling in, finding out how to balance everything and finding that groove. And I think also, um, you know, if, you know, if I were the new chief coming in, I'm promoting from within. We have, um, officers who are there already and everybody's used to things being a certain way. At, anytime you have a command changeover, people are like not breathing right away. They're like, what's going to happen, right? Who's getting fired? Who's coming in that I'm not going to like? And, you know, because Ned's pretty laid back. And so I think what's going to be really, um, not hard, but you know, kind of interesting is how are you going to step into that role and keep things moving? Because, you know, Miranda, you, you know, we work a lot, a lot together. And, and my MO is like, not fast and furious, but definitely efficient. And so, um, it's kind of like stepping back and making sure that I'm meeting everybody where they need to be. Like the change is good, but we're not, I'm not here to steamroll everybody, you know? And I think that's going to be, uh, you know, a balancing act.
Thank you. Patrick, your biggest challenge?
I, I think. I, I think Jen said it, one of the things is the operational challenges. I know Ned is, uh, struggling with, you know, recruitment, we talked about and, you know, attrition rates and, you know, retaining officers once we, we get them, I think that's probably going to be, be the biggest challenge. Yeah, I mean, developing policy and procedure, but, uh, in a previous interview I indicated, I mean, policy and procedure is a challenge. It's a challenge for any department, but it's also needed, it's very much needed. Uh, from a liability standpoint, community wants it, departments want it, officers want it. That's like a guideline, it's like a compass. And so that's going to be a challenge too. But the good thing about, uh, law enforcement is you can, you can kind of, for lack of a better word, you can kind of cannibalize like Boulder County's, you know, bits and pieces of policy that would fit for Ned. Not everything would fit for Ned. And so you kind of use what's already out there, except, you know, not reinventing the wheel. And, you know, um, so I think policy development and implementation would be a challenge. I was thinking about, you know, the community, learning about the community and the, and the officers that are, the great officers that are working there. But I don't view those as challenges, I view those as opportunities. I'm excited to, uh, get to know the community members of Netherland. I'm, I'm excited to get out there and talk to business owners and learn more about the board of trustees and the council and things like that. And to learn about the officers. Because really the business of business is people, that's all it is. I mean, it comes down to people. So I, I don't view that as a, as a challenge, I view it as an opportunity. But there are operational challenges within the department. And like Jen indicated, first and foremost is we got to get staffing and we got to get that hopefully under control. But I think with the recruitment, uh, strategies that Jen mentioned and, uh, I, I mentioned a couple of them. I think we can hopefully get a handle on that. But there will be some challenges, but it's nothing that we as a department in a town can't overcome, at least I believe.
Right. So obviously, you know, Marshall Johns has been with us almost 20 years. We want someone who's going to stay with this department. How long, Patrick, do you envision yourself being here if offered the job?
Uh, until I drop dead, probably. No, I, I, you know, I have no plans. I think, uh, I think, uh, Chief Johns asked me in a prior interview, well, what happens if, because I'm friends with, uh, Chief Hayes, he's running for sheriff uh, in Boulder County, so what happens if Chief Hayes, you know, calls you up and, and asks you to, to come work for him? I, I would say no, I've worked for you before. Um, but no, I have no plans. Look, I'm 52 years old. Uh, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm too old to be jumping around from department to department. I don't have any other applications out there. Uh, Ned is where I want to be, I, I selected Ned for a reason. So I plan to stay with Ned for the long haul.
Great, thanks. Ben?
You know, I know that, uh, department sustainability is a big issue and having chiefs cycle through is really hard on everybody. And, um, unfortunately, for some reason, the, the, the average seems to be, um, two to three years.
Yeah, two to three years, yeah.
Yeah. And I don't know why that is, I haven't done any research on that. Um, but you know, uh, I love Ned and the, the good news about me is I know what I'm walking into. And, uh, it's definitely, um, I'm, I'm comfortable and I'm confident with that. And, you know, I'm, I'm also in here till retirement. I mean, that's my, that's my intention for sure. And I have, yeah, I mean, I, I definitely feel like, um, no offense, Patrick, but I have that, you know, I've been doing it, right? I mean, I've been here and I-
Oh, no, I, I get it.
Yeah. Um, so, and I, and the, the other thing about it is I, I have the, I'm so lucky, right? Because I've worked for a mid-sized department, I've also worked for a department that has seven or eight. And so I, I kind of, I do know about the graphs on all the other sides of the fence, right? But I'm, you know, I chose Ned, I'm here in Ned and I purposely did that. And so I think you can rely on that with me.
Then I think, um, we do have a specific question just for Jen. But Jen, I think the board was hoping that you could elaborate. You obviously did, were intending to, to resign, retire, um, kind of pulled back out of that to pursue this. Can you maybe just walk us through the thought process that went behind your previous resignation to where we are today?
Yeah, you know, part of me felt like it was, it was a natural breaking point for, for that. When Chief Johns was, Chief Johns announced his retirement. And I, you know, I mentioned I had been through, uh, going into or working for a department that had four chiefs in two years and having new chiefs come in. And it, it's a, it's a really can be a very exhausting process. And especially for me as the sergeant, you know, um, with our staffing levels and it's a salaried position. And I felt like it was a good time to have the changing of the guard and let somebody new come in and just run with it, you know? And, and I knew that it would also be a loss for the community just because I have some historical knowledge and you were losing the chief, but I also knew you have Officer Guerte who's been here longer than I have. And so, you know, that, that was where that started, right? And originally, I, you know, I did mention, I wrote that email about why I didn't put in originally for the chief's position. And that was, um, you know, I did change my mind, I got a lot of feedback from the community and I realized that I was, you know, thinking that it was, um, something that I should be stepping into from more of a, a lateral position. And, and I thought, you know, I, I was wrong, right? I'm, I'm great for this position, I'm excited for this position and I, um, I'll be really good at it.
Great, thanks, Ben. That was the last of our formal questions, so I'd love to invite the board of trustees, if you have any additional questions you'd like to ask the applicants. Hope Mary Lars is back.
Yes, my internet's gotten a little more stable again.
We'll open the floor here, but Mary Lars-
So Mayor, Mayor, why are you broadcasting from the surface of the sun apparently?
We're going on two heliophysics missions right now at work, so you know, I'm just really diving into my, into my work, so.
All right, got it, got it.
Um, now, Patrick and Jen, I wanted to thank you guys for, you know, answering an hour's worth of questions here. And, uh, definitely want to throw this open to the board members who are here this evening, if they have any further questions. I'm actually going to kick it off, though it's going to be a question, it's, it's, it's going to be a slightly different question for the two of you because you are, would be coming to Netherland in slightly different directions. And so, um, for Patrick, the, the question is kind of, you know, we've been really fortunate as a community to have Marshall Johns, you know, Larry Johns worked for us for so long and becau- and, and be so well-known in the community. I mean, everyone in town knows him, they feel comfortable going up and talking to him. He's, he's a member, a strong member of our community, has been for a long time. So if you were to step into the role of Marshall, how, what would be your, sort of your tactic to start building a relationship within unity, within the residents of Netherland and, and build that out?
Well, well, the first, that's a great question. The first thing I would do is get with the chief, get with Chief Johns and, and get some advice and feedback, or get some advice and pick his brain on a new coming chief and what could I could do? Uh, because I'm stepping into a new community, unknown community, so the first and foremost is I would, I would meet with the chief and say, look, can you, can you help me with this? Can you, can you give me some tips, some pointers? Uh, give me some things that work for you, things that didn't work for you. Because he just didn't walk into that role day one and he was a success. It took him a long time to build up to the success he became and is. So I would definitely meet with Chief, uh, Johns if he would meet with me, and I'm sure he would, at least I hope he would, and pick his brain about what he went through to gain that trust and support, uh, the trial and errors of a police chief in Netherland. I think that's a great resource, so that'd be my first go-to guy. Can, can you help me with this? Give me some pointers, give me some advice. I'm always open for advice and pointers, uh, the more I can learn, the better off I'm going to be, so I would start there.
Great, thanks. And on Jen, on your side, obviously you are known in the community. Uh, you've worked here for a few years, you are, you're well-known as well. Um, so my, my sort of similar question for you is moving from a position of sergeant to the position of marshal does kind of change your relationship with the community. And I'm curious, what, what would you see as, how would you want to approach that? How would you want to approach the interactions with the resident versus as sergeant?
Do you broke out, uh, approach the, the residence what?
Yeah, the, how would you approach the residents of Netherland differently as the marshal? And build those relationships as the new town marshal versus what you have been doing as one of our sergeants?
I don't think there's any difference. I, I mean, there really isn't, I, um, there, yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no difference. I mean, we're, it's, you know, the, a role of, uh, you know, the, a role, really just no difference as an officer, a sergeant, a chief, anywhere, between anyone, we're going to approach the citizens exactly the same. Now, um, you know, one idea that I had, because I've been thinking about this, is, um, is, you know, I thought maybe it would be really good, just like I was saying, I'd have meetings, open door meetings for the new office, for the officers. But I thought it would be kind of cool as a new chief to have for the first, at least the first three months, and who knows how long? But, um, you know, every two weeks to have a meet and greet. Or like, hey, this is my, my community office hours, so I'll make sure it overlaps when someone else is working and I'm here. Maybe I'll go to the library and do it, or maybe I'll pick a different, like a coffee shop. But, you know, I'm going to be here, anybody wants to come chat or complain or kudos, come, you know, come see me. Because I think that's important and I think that might be the difference where they might bring a different level of concern to me or ideas to me that they wouldn't to a sergeant. Um, and I, so I think it's just making, making myself available. Um, the other thing I thought about, I thought would be really fun, because I was an English major, is writing like a little, you know, thing in the Mountaineer every month, you know, um. I, I don't know, I think, stuff like that.
Thanks, that, that really, yeah, that's a great answer, thank you very much to both of you. Um, that was the question I had, so, uh, trustee Taylor, do you have any questions for the candidates?
Yes, I'm going to throw something at you, Patrick. I'm going to pick on you.
I'll try to catch it.
Okay, um, so you were asked, uh, you were asked a gotcha question. And it was the standard question, what could you do better? And Patrick, I felt while you were not intending to do this, that what you delivered was the standard response. And I know this was not your intent, but it kind of came off as, oh, I work too hard and that's never the right answer. I would like to give you an opportunity to think of another area where you feel you could make an improvement. And I appreciate your original answer, I'm just saying-
Yeah, yeah, I, I know what you're saying.
It was just skirting clothes to that wrong answer.
I think, uh, sometimes I can be, uh, I can be a little temperamental. Uh, I think sometimes, um, I don't want to use the term hot-headed, but I can get irritated sometimes pretty easily. So that is something I've worked on over the years. Uh, and I'm a lot better at it, you know, some deep breaths, some, you know, two or three second meditation and I'm good again. But, you know, as a younger cop, you know, I was, you know, I was, you know, a hard ass for lack, lack of a better word. I mean, I didn't do anything wrong or anything, but it was learning how to kind of, and I think this comes with maturity and getting a little older, uh, learning how to kind of, don't think, take things so personally, uh, especially in the role of a police chief. People are going to upset you, you're not going to agree with everybody and that's perfectly okay. So, you know, temper, to answer your question again, uh, not that I'm a hothead and I'm yelling at people all the time, but you know, learning how to be more calm and sometimes when I haven't been. So, and I think that's come more with my maturity, with age, I'm getting old, so.
Very good.
That's something I would, would, would probably answer.
That's it for me.
Thanks, Julian. Eric?
I mean, I was part of the, uh, initial review of these applicants, uh, along with trustee Taylor. So I do think some other trustee should get a chance, uh, to ask questions because I've had a chance to ask these folks a lot of questions. Um, but the, but the one that I think might be useful, um, thinking from the perspective of what the public might like to hear, um, and what we might like to have on record, is question about, uh, what you would do if one of your officers either broke the law or broke policy and, uh, or used force in a way that was inconsistent with departmental policy. How would you approach the situation? What would, what would be your, uh, initial, uh, actions taken? And, uh, then how would you go from there?
Is that for me or?
For both of you, so in any order. Go for it, Patrick.
Well, I think, you know, and I've dealt with this before in my previous agency in Lewisville where officers have violated policy. You know, we've had, we had a officer-involved shooting in 2019, I believe, 2018. Um, an officer of about five years, got into an OIS, officer-involved shooting, shot at a truck, it was all over the news. I helped investigate that. And you treat it, I mean, it's a little different from a standard investigation because now you have an officer involved. Realizing that the officer has rights, but you investigate it. You determine whether or not, I mean, there's an IA, internal investigation, determine whether or not the officer, uh, violated policy. I'm given what happened in this particular incident without getting any specific details. But we investigated it, determined he violated about three or four of our policies. And then there's a process beyond that because he's going to get a lawyer and, and, you know, the whole rigmarole of that. But you investigate, use of force, uh, investigation, IA, things like that. But you need, as a police chief, uh, as the final say, you need to be able to look at it impartially. You need to look at both sides, look at the evidence and determine whether or not there's criminal activity or there, there's a violation of policy, sometimes there's both. You have to work closely with the district attorney's office in Boulder County to determine whether or not there's a criminal, uh, charge that could be applicable to the officer or officers, depending on what, how many. And then you go from there and you have to be willing to take the appropriate action necessary. In this particular incident with this OIS, he violated our policy. So the recommendation from me, and I wasn't the only one recommending it, it started with me and it went up the chain and the recommendation was termination. So you have to be able to, to, uh, and then you have to explain to the public. You know, that's another component of it, uh, of what happened with this officer. Again, going back to that transparency without revealing details, exact details of what, you know, in the internal investigation. But you have to be able to explain that to the public, wow, you know, the actions taken against this officer because the public is going to want answers. So there's a lot of moving parts when an officer breaks the law or violates policy. But ultimately, as a police chief, you have to make that decision, friends or not, working closely or not, what's best for not only the community, but what's best for the department.
Same question.
Yeah, well, obviously there's stuff that's statutorily driven with that. And as Patrick mentioned, policy and, so we all, we all know about that. I think the point is, is that, you know, as, as members of the law enforcement community, we are held to a higher standard. And because of that higher standard, we, and we are also very public. And so I think first and foremost, there has to be communication from the chief of police, whether that's through the, through Miranda, um, whoever the PIO is going to be, like as soon as possible. There has to be communication because we all know in Netherland that it's a small community and, um, misinformation or lack of information creates misinformation and that's almost always harder to deal with than just the truth, right? Sometimes it's just, this happened, we don't, we don't, we don't know yet, right? I, you know, however that's going to look. So I think that, um, the other point to that is, you know, law enforcement, whether it's one of my offices or another officer, they don't get any special breaks. I mean, it's just, it is what it is. And, uh, so you just, you do what you have to do, whether that's, you know, dealing with it, like I said, statutorily, statutorily or through policy. Um, is this going to be, you know, something that's going to be dealt with, with, um, education or training? Or is it going to be a formal discipline? There's all these different things that, we'll, we'll figure that, that part out. But you have to know it's going to be damaging, it's going to be damaging to the trust with the community, whether whatever was hap- was accused of happening, happened or didn't happen. And you're going to have to rebuild that trust. And it's going to be damaging to the morale of your own department. And so you have to also, in my opinion, as a chief, I would want to make sure I was, I was supporting the members within my own department as well, right? And, and that also is, it can be pretty isolating, no one's allowed to talk about anything. Um, it, it, the whole process is, is pretty hard on everybody.
And I, excellent answer that Jen gave and she made a really good point that, I just want to make a point where she made a really good point about getting ahead, uh, of the problem or wherever, you know, as far as informing the community. I've been on both sides where we were ahead with preparing statements and, and issuing that to the community. But then we were behind and like Jen said, the, the longer you take to, now you have to have your ducks in a row. You have to know what, you know, provide accurate facts. But she's exactly right, you don't want to be on the opposite end where you're withholding information for fear or whatever. You want to get that information out accurate and clear it with the DA or wherever you have to clear it with. Get it out to the community as, as quickly as possible because she made a good point, you know, about, you know, not saying anything. you know, about, you know, not saying anything. Well, then the rumors fly. So you gotta get ahead of it.
I think the last piece that I just wanted to say was also with that, you have, we have to admit if we've made a mistake or we're wrong, right? And if an officer does something that's wrong, ultimately, it's, if I'm the chief, it comes back to me, right? The buck stops here. So in terms of the community and how we're gonna deal with that, I mean, that, that's, that's a component, right? The officer's gonna be held responsible and you have all of this due process happening over here. But what got us to that point, it's really, the onus is on me. And I'm gonna have to come out and say that. I mean, that, that's, for me, that's also a huge component of that. It just, it's messy, but it's, it's absolutely necessary.
Yeah, good point.
Thanks.
That question, Eric, and those great answers. Tanya, did you have any questions for the candidates?
Hi, yeah, nice to meet everybody. I had a couple. One is just for Jennifer. And it was basically right before you submitted your application for marshal, we had received a letter of resignation. And I'm wondering, why did you want to resign? I mean, I understand why you'd want to be marshal, but I don't, but why? What made you want to resign the force, Netherlands Police Department?
Yeah, I think, I, I think I answered, I touched upon that earlier, but I can circle back. And, you know, I felt that it was a good breaking point for me when, you know, once the chief decided to retire, I was basically at that point thinking, well, you know what? This is a really big time of change for Ned PD. They're gonna, they can bring somebody new in. That person will most likely bring a sergeant with them. That happens a lot. And it was what I had referred to earlier as a natural breaking point. I had mentioned earlier about being with MEED Police Department and going through, you know, four chiefs within one year. It, and the restructuring and it was, it was pretty challenging and trying for me. And I also related to that with the, with the way that the staffing was and knowing that my role at that point as a sergeant would be, the sergeant's position is salaried. So when I end up working and covering a lot of shifts and getting, having to do that and getting really run down, I, I was, you know, it was pretty exhausting. And so knowing that we were losing Chief Johns, I mean, that, that's a huge part of our staffing. And then bringing somebody in, presumably who didn't know Ned or the culture of Ned, and then also being short-staffed, because we were also down another officer, that, that had a lot to do with it.
Okay. And then if you were to get promoted, then we'll be down two officers again. But do, do you feel it'll be easy to fill those positions?
Well, if I get, so we have somebody right now that's in process. So if I get promoted, we'll be down one. And we have some potential applicants right now to fill that sergeant's role. And I'm really confident about our ability to recruit some good people in for that role.
Okay. And then I had another question for both of you guys. It's not really some huge question. But you hear a lot about how Ned is so unique and different from other communities. I'm curious how you would police differently in a community like Ned? What do you think the differences are? And what do you think is the same everywhere in, in relation to Netherlands? And your past experiences, that you could bring that experience to Ned, even though we are different?
Well, I think every small community is, has their own culture, own uniqueness. Ned is no different. I'm not familiar with Ned, but I am familiar with Boulder County. And I worked in Boulder County for, for many years. But I think every, every, every agency in America, you know, policing a municipality, big or small, the municipality is different. It's unique. Unique is, Ned is unique because it's Ned and it has its own culture and uniqueness, which makes it special. I love working for smaller agencies. I've always loved, my career has been with smaller agencies, Lamar, Lewisville. Now, Lewisville and Lamar are a lot bigger than Ned, but they're, you know, the average size of a police department in, you know, the United States is less than a hundred. And I know Ned is way, you know, less than that. But I love small communities, because I'm a big proponent in community policing. And, and I love getting out, talking to people, learning about people. And so Ned would be a perfect fit. And again, going back to, you know, Ned is unique because it's Ned, you know, it's part of Boulder County. But I love small communities. And I'm excited at the opportunity to learn more about Ned. I've driven through it a lot of times. I've stopped there for lunch and things. But it would be an opportunity for me to learn more about what makes Ned unique. I know it's a small town, but what makes Ned, Ned, and what, you know, contributes to that uniqueness? And I'm excited for the opportunity.
Have you been following in the past year, like the police blotter type incidents and kind of getting familiar with our kind of crime?
As far as, you know, I was picking Jen and Miranda's brain in, I believe Troy at the PD, I think a couple of days ago when I was there. A lot of, it seems like you got property crime, obviously that's everywhere. But then you have like some DVs and people, you know, person-to-person crimes. But I haven't been, to answer your question, I haven't been following the blotter. But, you know, I imagine you have property crimes, just like everything else. I mean, it probably, you know, swells up during the ski season and stuff like that. And then you have, probably runs the gamut of, you know, person-on-person crimes, domestic violence, assaults, things like that. But Ned, from what I understand, what, what Jen and Miranda told me, has a relatively low call load. I mean, you don't get a lot of calls. I mean, what, 1,200 a year or something like that? Jen, you said, or, I mean, that's, that's pretty low. That's pretty good. And that's a testament to the community of Ned, and it's a testament to the police department. Because that could easily be double, triple. But that's, you know, that's a testament to the community members. And it's definitely a testament of the hard work of the Ned Police Department.
That's true. Great. Thank you.
So, yeah, you know, Ned's unique for a lot of reasons. One, we, you know, we have a huge tourist component. We have the leaf peepers, we have Eldora, we have the, you know, the whole gateway to the scenic stuff. And so there's this constant push-pull in Ned, right? We, like, the want and not want, right? We, we, we have, you know, so that's one unique part of it. And the other unique part is you also have, you have, there's a, people in Ned who want a lot of, like, progress and modernization. And then you have a whole nother component of Ned who wants, like, I moved up here for not to get away from that. Again, sort of this push-pull or these like diverging, you know, desires. And the other thing that makes Ned unique is they kind of take care of their own. So the question is, how does the police department fit in with the community that likes to take care of their own? And I've mentioned this before, is they want us, like, they'll call us and say, hey, this happened, but they don't want to tell you who was involved or when or why. And so you kind of have to find other ways to build those rapport and relationships and trust, again, to, to really serve the community. And that takes time, right? Right? I remember that I had been there for a year, no joke, waving to the same person, you know, every time I drove by. And finally, it had been over a year and they finally waved back. And I remember telling the chief, oh, my gosh, oh, my God, you know, they finally waved back, you know? And you kind of have to keep waving, like, people won't wave back at you. So it's unique like that. And I don't, you know, I, I did, I, I gave some letters to the board of, that, you know, people had written in about contacts with me. And I did that on purpose, because it does, it, it, it shows how you, how I, I like to work my day, right? And so one of those letters was somebody who gave a hundred dollar donation to the Netherlands Food Bank. And the reason that person did that is I pulled them over for a traffic stop on January 1st. So every year on January 1st, I will run traffic and I'll pull people over who are speeding. They're going at least 15 miles an hour over the speed limit. And instead of giving them a ticket, I give them a lottery ticket. And I say, here's to starting off your new year lucky, right? And this guy was so happy that he wrote one of those letters that I sent you. And he said, you know, because of this, I donated a hundred dollars to the Netherlands Food Bank. And, and that, my friends, is what makes Ned unique, right? We can, it comes back. And so if we keep thinking of Ned as unique and quirky or, you know, all of those things and embracing it and working with it, that's great. And, yeah, I mean, did that answer your question, Tanya?
Yeah, thank you, guys. Yeah.
I got a quick question for, for Jennifer. What is, what, you gotta, you gotta tell me what a, what a leaf peeper is. I'm dying to know.
Oh, the fall foliage. So they, scenic byway.
All right. I never heard that. I'm familiar, yeah, I never heard of a leaf peeper, so.
Is that, is that your questions, Tanya? Did that cover you?
Yeah, thank you.
Awesome, thanks. And Lindsay, last one.
Going last means that I've got to hear a bunch of wonderful questions asked and have gotten to know our candidates really well from their answers. So at this point, I don't have any additional questions, but I just wanted to thank you both for applying. And good luck to you both.
Thank you so much.
Can I say one other thing? Is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, I was think, I was just gonna see if any of the trustees had final questions, but then I wanted to give you guys a chance to close the evening out. So we are running up against the end of our hour and a half. So, yeah, please, let's have, I, sorry, I can't remember who went first and who went last, but I think you went first at the beginning. I don't, go ahead, Jennifer.
Patrick went first at the beginning. So should I go first now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I just, you know, there was a couple of things I wanted to bring up that I think illustrate my commitment and my, you know, some of this thinking outside the box and my desire to help Ned basically grow and come up into par with best practices, but also keeping that engaging with the community approach. And so one is, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't know if the board knows, but I did work on a grant for the police department and it took three tries to finally get it. And it was right there around $75,000 to get us a reporting system and an evidence tracking system and computers in our cars. And really what that's gonna do is, is it's gonna bring us up with efficiency and report writing, but, which is gonna allow us to be out in the community more. I mean, ultimately, it's gonna save a ton of time, but it's also gonna help us track crime and anticipate trends and really serve victims better. I mean, hands down, period. And so I'm really super excited about that. And the other thing I want to mention is that we're, I started a partnership with the Boulder Tech School in Boulder to help work on our cars. So they're like buffing and removing decals and doing stuff like that. And that was me like thinking, well, we're about to go drive all the way to, I think it's Aurora, to have this work done. And it's gonna cost three to $400. But I remembered Boulder Tech has this automotive program and the students work on cars. So I called to the director of their program and said, hey, we have this need. Is this, will this help you? And he was so excited. And so we've sent two cars down to them now, which for sure, we're gonna get a much better sale rate on one of them, because they made it look almost brand new. And so that's the stuff that I'm, you know, I'm trying to kind of express in this interview. And I, and I did want to take an extra minute to give a couple of examples, because it, it didn't really come up in, in those specific questions. But, so thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm really excited.
Thanks, Jennifer. Yeah, that's really, hope is, Patrick, is there anything our questions didn't get to that you really want us to know?
No, I, I just appreciate everybody's time. The hour's getting late, I know. I was, I'm very excited to be here, excited about all the questions I was asked. I love answering questions. And for the gentleman that asked me to clarify more, thank you, sir, on that tough thing I had to work on. I appreciate it. But yeah, I, I'm excited about this opportunity. I have the skills, knowledge, education to be a successful chief for the town of Netherlands. And I am driven, loyal, and I will be very good for the community and the members of the police department. And I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you so much. I look forward to the next process component on Friday.
Patrick, you said it's getting late. You should attend one of our BOT meetings.
Oh, I've been to those, sir.
Okay.
I've been to those.
Just wait, you'll see.
Yeah, the coffees, the coffees are flowing.
Oh, yeah.
Well, like you said, Patrick, the next one is Friday, 4:00 PM at the Community Center, a chance to meet in person. If anyone has other questions they come up with, and certainly anyone from the public who has questions, come up and meet our two candidates and then weigh in for the BOT as we look to try and make this impossible decision sometime next week.
I appreciate it.
I think that's it. Thank you guys all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you.